Welcome to the meeting of the Oaklusa County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin today's meeting with an invocation led by Pastor Jason Allen from Woodlawn Baptist Church and the Pledge of Allegiance with the colors presented by Baker High School Junior ROTC. Will you please stand with us? Mr. Hofstadter, Administrator's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have just a couple of updates for the board this morning. First, I would like to remind the board that immediately following our next BCC meeting on the 18th, our FACT legislative day start in Tallahassee. So many of us we've traveling to Tallahassee to attend the legislative days. Lastly, I just wanted to get the board's feedback on we are fast approaching a year of having to provide fire service for the Dorcas Fire District as accomplished as an act of the legislature last legislative cycle. We've been working through a series of mutual aid agreements with neighboring fire districts to provide coverage there. That is not a sustainable long-term model. I would suggest if the board is agreeable that you allow staff to put together a proposed list of general fire protection services. We'll put that out on the street through an RFP process and see if there's any interest in providing fire protection service for that coverage area. I don't know that there will be. You know, there'll be some, obviously some costs involved with that. We just went through an exercise last week whereby we looked at the impact fee rates and any possible adjustments to the impact fee rates. Now's not the time to do that while we're having coverage through mutual aid agreements. So if the board does not have any objections, we will look to put that together, put that out on the street, and then we'll report back to the board if there's any interest in providing service through one of the adjoining districts or other districts here in the county. So with that, sir, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hosshuhara, the county attorney's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no updates this morning.
Mr. Clerk.
Just a quick update on the ERP selection. I appreciate the county's involvement in that. And we'll be winding up the evaluation process of the different ERP packages at the end of the month and hopefully get something to you shortly after that, once we do the evaluation and the selection process. But I do appreciate the county's involvement in the process and looking forward to identifying something that works for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Going to do public comment a bit in a different order. Going to ask if there's public comment regarding consent agenda item number two, which is request approval of and authorize the chairman to execute a proclamation declaring March 6, 2025 as Frank M. Butler Jr. Day in Oaklusa County to commemorate his 100th birthday. If there's any member from the public that has a desire to speak to this item only, we're going to take this item immediately following so that we can move our special guest into this time. Seeing no one from the public, Commissioners, do you have any action on consent agenda item number two?
I would pull it to be read and then ask that we approve it.
Permission to speak? So, Mr. Butler, thank you for coming today. I find it a tremendous pleasure to honor you for your 100 years of occupancy and service as a citizen in Oaklusa County. We love you and we're here to honor you and celebrate you today. And it's a distinct honor of mine to tell you that this man has not only served his fellow citizens out in the public, but also in our church and our choir. He's been such a tremendous asset at First United Methodist Church for such a long, long time, quietly, without recognition, without celebration. But it just brings me so much joy today for this to be a special day that honors you. Thank you so much for allowing this.
So a motion by Commissioner Cox, a second by, a motion by Commissioner Ketchel, second by Commissioner Cox. And Commissioner Ketchel, would you like to read?
Yes, I would. First, I'd like to say this is really an honor for me because you are such a distinguished citizen. You don't look your age. I don't know what I think 100 looks like, but you sure don't look 100. I've known your son forever. He graduated with my husband. You share the same birthday as my father, and my father's gone. And you worked on the Beumark missile program, which my father-in-law worked with you at Hurlberg at the same time. So I want to, I'm so excited to read this. I cannot tell you. So whereas Frank M. Butler Jr. was born on March 6, 1925 in Anniston, Alabama, and whereas he obtained his commercial and amateur federal radio license in the early 1940s and became a broadcast engineer at several radio stations in and around Anniston, and whereas he joined the Army Signal Corps in 1943 and was responsible for World War II communications in France and England, thank you. And whereas he enrolled at the University of Alabama, Roll Tide, in 1946 and obtained a degree in electrical engineering, and whereas he married his high school sweetheart Jean and moved to Ohio, cold weather experiences and the call of Aglen Air Force Base brought the couple to Fort Walton Beach in 1951. And whereas during his career at Aglen Air Force Base, he was involved in field testing major weapons systems, including hound dog, Beumark, and the air-launched ballistic missiles. His career included design and testing multiple communications radar and electronic warfare systems. And whereas he has been active in the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineer, is a life member of the American Relay League and the Quarter Century Wireless Association, a fellow of the Radio Club of America, a member of the Air Force Military Affiliated Radio System, and an active member of Mensa. Whereas he served as section communications manager for the AARRL in Northwest Florida, as well as the director of Southeastern Division as U.S. Representative to the International Amateur Radio Union, led many technical committees of the AARRL, was the first in the area to introduce frequencies above 30 megahertz into common amateur radio use and fielded and maintained many of the first repeaters in the Fort Walton Beach Dustin area. And whereas along with radio, his other lifelong passion is music, which led him to join the choir of every church he attended throughout the places he lived. He's been a member of the First United Methodist Church of Fort Walton Beach Chancel Choir since 1951, where he sings tenor, maintains the music library, and organizes for each week's events and keeps the other choir members in line. They're all here. We're going to have that in a minute. Whereas he enjoys time with his children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren, David, Nellie, Steve, Jackie, Ryan, Stephanie, Michael, Kate, Lisa, Jay, Claire, Katie, Thomas, and Valerie, his close friend Joy Bates, and the many loving members of his church congregation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Oaklusa County Board of County Commissioners that we do hereby proclaim and recognize March 6, 2025 as Frank M. Butler Jr. Day duly passed, hopefully this day, March 6 of March, by the Oaklusa County Commission.
Commissioners, any further comment? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Could we have all the members of his choir and church please stand to honor him? Thank you. I'll bring this around for a photo.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes.
I just wanted, just wanted to, not to pile on, but I just wanted to recognize the Butler family. Mr. Butler's wife, Jean Butler, was my third grade teacher in, I think, 1974. So my mom taught third grade. They both taught at the same school, but my mom would not teach her own sons. So she made sure I had Ms. Butler. So I just wanted to say thank you for your wife's service as a teacher.
This time we'll move into public comment. If you have filled out a speaker card and have turned it in, then I believe I have them all. If not, please turn that in as you can, and we will have a second public comment time at the end of the meeting. You'll have three minutes to speak on any item that you choose. We'll begin with Shannon Nixon.
Thank you. Well, I'm obviously not good at this, but I came here today because there's something really heavy on my mind. And sometimes it's good to just reflect and go back over some of the things that we already know. I farmed in this county for 37 years. I know I look too young to have done that, but... And every day, every day I hear that the most important industries in Oaklusa County are defense, contracting, and tourism. Well, I respectfully disagree with that because without farming, there is no food. And I can look at everyone in here and tell that y'all are participating in that process. You see, farming is under attack from a lot of things. And we protect the snail darter, we protect gopher tortoises, we protect sea turtles, we even protect sea oars. But we really have absolutely no tangible protections of farmland. And I can tell you, that is concerning. I farm 800 acres, and of those 800 acres, I own less than 10%. And the reason I don't own those acres is because I can't afford them. Because the real estate market has driven farmland probably 10 times what a farmer could pay. My son Jacob wants to follow in my footsteps. And I'm going to tell you, it's going to take a miracle. But what bewilders me and perplexes me as an uneducated farmer is why something so important to all of us is just, it just seems to be so recklessly disregarded by so many people in a position to protect it. I know there's a lot of money to be made, transforming farmland into development. But I promise you, all the money in the world is not going to fix it when we run out of food. And we're headed there, folks. I'm sorry, we're headed there. You know, the Bible says that the love of money is the root of all evil. And I'm not sure that we're at that point, but I think money is the driver of all things. And, you know, this might sound a little corny, but as I was going through the forest, there's a little sign up there with Smokey the Bear that says, "Only you can prevent forest fires." And I thought, you know, I need a little saying for our county commissioners because really, the truth is, is only you guys can prevent what's going on in this county. And I, you know, only you can prevent the wildfire destruction that's taking our farmland. And we don't have five or 10 years. And so, you know, my prayer is, is that all of you guys take the time to reflect on this and do what's right. And also, I would like to invite all of you, we're having a day on the farm, put on by Farm Bureau, on the April the 12th at nine o'clock. Be there. Love to see you. Thank you.
Gil Fortner? Gil Fortner?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I was hoping my card would get shuffled till later in the presentation, but here we are. Last time I spoke for you, I mentioned having the opportunity to travel to Savannah, Georgia. Since that time, I thought about some of the other things that I experienced in a previous trip to Savannah, Georgia. I took a tour of the city, and they were explaining to us, as we rode around downtown Savannah, some of the, you know, centuries-old houses, how that they, being the local officials, to keep the homes from burning either had dictated that they put metal roofs on them or tile roofs because everybody had a fireplace. That's how you heat it. Okay? That little thing that someone did at that point in history changed where we get to visit Savannah today and appreciate the history there. Okay? We're kind of at the same point here in Oaklusa County's history. We're kinda at the same point here in Okaloosa County's history. We all looked as the news horrifically covered the fires in California. The county administrator mentioned this morning having trouble with fire coverage in the Dorcas area. We are building neighborhoods next to longstanding forests that aren't like Blackwater Forest, where the forestry service goes in and clears out underbrush and things like that. If we get to the point where we build neighborhoods of such density, I asked someone that sat on one of the fire boards yesterday, I said, "How many houses in the past year that y'all have responded to have you actually saved? Not just shown up and contained what happened, but saved?" And he said, "There was only one, and it was because that person had put in a sprinkler system." Okay? Think of that, think of neighborhoods that are now being put out in areas in our county to where we don't have ready fire service available, and if those same factors that happened in California happened here, we would find ourselves, I'm afraid, in a situation that, you know, we would not find that we'd made adequate preparation for. I thank you for your time, and we'll talk on another aspect on another day. Thank y'all.
Lane Watkins?
Lane Watkins, 6087 Bud Molten Road, Crestview. Commissioners, we express concern with the study Immediate Action Revisions. The public deserves a public forum with commissioners to discuss in detail the deficiencies and determine solutions. When we do that, it resolves many of the issues you were talking about. So, for example, about urban development boundaries for areas such as Baker and Holt. Hope you all realize that right now, rural community overlays for Baker and Holt are in the existing comp plan. Of course, nothing's been done with them. Study Revision 7 says, "Let's have the citizens revise them for future development." That directly addresses Commissioner Mixon's concern. The draft study Urban Development Boundary is far more than Crestview and a little extra. County Departments and Inspire used a five-mile radius around the new Shoal River Sewer Facility, so that's included, and the existing sewer to expand the boundary all the way to the county eastern boundary, as well as up north. So further discussion involving the public will show you the study Immediate Action Revisions are really common sense solutions, that when combined with addressing roads will significantly address the three citizen priorities of rural character preservation, infrastructure, and transparency. So we look forward to collaborating with all parties to make this effort come to fruition. Now, with respect to land speculators, land speculators must be treated with the same rights and respect as the other 40,000 citizens of unincorporated North Okaloosa, no more, no less. I highly recommend land use attorney Richard Grosso be invited to speak here on the following points he made regarding settled Florida case law in his November 2024 Burt Harris Act presentation. The Harris Act does not prohibit a reduction in allowable uses or density in intensity. It does not. Landowners have no vested rights to continuation of existing planning or zoning allowances. The Harris Act creates no property right to increased zoning, and a landowner has no right to a comprehensive plan amendment. Mr. Grosso is telling you that the 40,000 citizens of unincorporated North Okaloosa are not obligated to guarantee speculative future land use. The county should not be allowing poor density management policy in order to protect speculation. I'd appreciate if y'all would take this under advisement, and I look forward to talking with you all to get this thing moving soon.
Pat Watkins?
Pat Watkins, 6087 Bud Molten Road. There was a brief discussion at the last Board of County Commission meeting about the North Okaloosa Planning Study. Several months ago, the students in the study area eagerly and enthusiastically participated in the several public meetings and provided input from more than 4,000 individuals, saying that their three most important priorities included a desire to preserve the rural character, inadequate infrastructure, and a lack of transparency from our elected representatives. And when the study recommendations were delivered in support of those priorities, Growth Management wrote a long letter that urged adoption of those recommendations. That is where everything stopped. The Board of County Commissioners voted to simply acknowledge, receipt, and wait. Now, more than four months later, you are telling the citizens of the study area that you are not impressed with the study recommendations and that the action plan is not right. Yet there have been no public recommendations on what is not right or what is right. We, the citizens, want to continue to work with you publicly and make it right, just as we did in the beginning. We want you, our elected officials, to be transparent with us. We want to participate. The study recognized that Okaloosa County is very unique in that it is divided into three very distinct segments. The South Third makes up the tourist and beautiful beach area, where thousands of visitors enjoy their leisure time. Next, we have our military base and reservation, where our armed forces work and train to protect our great country. The third unique part of our county is the study area that is rural and agricultural, with small, family-oriented communities dotting the landscape. Those three segments, when added together, offer much to our county's economy and various ways of life. There is a lifestyle for everybody. The north part should remain unique, just as the beaches are more metropolitan, we want to stay more rural and agricultural. So to respond to the assertion that the north part is not as unique as some might think, that is not so, it is and should remain unique. In fact, all three segments of our county are wonderful and protective and unique unto themselves. Let us keep it that way, please. Thank you.
Scott Noble?
Scott Noble, 227 Third Street, Crestview. Good morning. You paid $1 million for a study, and what you call raw data are the heartfelt feelings of the citizens you are supposed to represent. That sounds like a dismissive attitude to me. The study is a blueprint done by professionals, and it's pretty obvious that you don't like it, from what I've seen so far. You've done nothing to implement it in four months, and it looks like you have no intention whatsoever of implementing it. So, I heard that looking into a stakeholder-citizen advisory committee, I heard nothing about citizens being involved in that. I did hear that the stakeholders being suggested are the building industry, real estate people, and engineering. There's nothing being said that's dismissive towards those stakeholders. Are the citizens who live here not stakeholders? The people who live in those areas? And as far as those who have invested or speculated on land, well, there's a risk in everything, in business. They don't get to just go to you to change the rules for themselves. Is it about property rights? Why are there zoning laws? To change on the whim of developers? How about let's mow down what's next to your homes? Put car washes, stores, affordable housing right next to where you live, with thousands of cars? If there's a nice home there, maybe you change the zoning and put up a hotel? Apparently, you think builders, developers, real estate people, and Chamber of Commerce types are more important than we are. Your buddies with deep pockets will not be satisfied until every square inch of the county is paved over with a subdivision shopping center or some other project that jams urbanization down our throats, that jams crime down our throats, and more cars, and more roads, more noise, more people who can vote to change the entire quality of life, the entire character of our region, and make it into a suburban sprawl of the worst type that our laws and the comprehensive plan is supposed to stop and prevent. So the study's goal in part was to prevent sprawl and protect from urbanization. It looks like you want to ignore the study. We want peace and quiet, nature, and a serene environment. You want to impose the opposite of that on us, is what it looks like. We don't want to live in a metropolitan urban area. So please, hear our concerns and implement that study.
Fred Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know, would it be appropriate if I say something very briefly?
You have quite a list, but you're welcome to.
I'll keep it as brief as possible, and I'll limit it to one point only, because I'm the one that had suggested a stakeholder-citizen-driven advisory committee. I want to make clear, and you can run back the tape if you want to, I very explicitly said that should be made up of not just engineers, architects, real estate people, but people who simply live and have an interest in the north end of the county. So I want to make crystal clear, my suggestion did not exclude citizens who are not involved in the industry. I envisioned them being an integral voting part of that committee. So I just want to make clear, I was not suggesting to oust or segregate out any particular interest group. So, thanks.
Yes, sir. Fred Jordan?
Fred Jordan, I live on 5912 Oak Hill Road, north side of Crestview. My remarks will be brief. I'm 79 years old, I'm a lifelong resident of Okaloosa County. I spent four years out of state in college and four years in the military during the Vietnam era, and I served in Vietnam. I have attended many of your county commission meetings in the past seven months. At the first meeting, I asked the county attorney, "Who are you supposed to represent? The people who voted you in office, or the people who want to move here?" The county attorney said, "You represent the people who live here and vote here." The people who live here and vote here have spoken in the report presented to you by Inspire. Those are the people who cared enough to come to meetings and express what they thought we needed. In the meetings that I have attended, and I did miss the last two, in the meetings I have attended, I have seen no desire on your part whatsoever to implement what Inspire report was given to you. Again, you were elected by the people who live here, and they have spoken. We know what we want. I don't believe you understand what we want, or you have no will to implement what we want. So I remind you, you were elected by the people who live in this county, and you are to represent the people who live in this county. Thank you.
Bonnie Grundel?
Good morning, I'm Bonnie Grundel, I live on Buck Ward Road in Baker. I am a lifelong Florida, I'm a Florida native. I've only lived in Okaloosa County, though, 39 years, so, North Okaloosa County, but this is home. I don't want to live anyplace else. Not a night goes by that my husband and I don't sit there, as we're into retirement time, and say, "What do we want to do? We want to move?" As Buck Haven is being built right next to our beautiful 22 acres? No, I still don't want to move. I love North Okaloosa County, this is my home. I love my community, I love my neighbors, and let me tell you, I know a lot of people, and I talk to a lot of people, and they don't come here, they don't write you letters. I encourage them, they won't do it. You know what they tell me? "Doesn't matter, you're not gonna listen, they're gonna do what they want to do." It's so frustrating. I know you care. I know you care about your community and your people. I think I represent thousands of people that I know. We do want to preserve the north end, we do want you to accept the Inspire study. Please stop the development until you make a decision on what to do with their findings. Please stop it. The Growth Committee, oh my gosh, I wish you'd go back and look at the tapes. We were there till 3:00 in the morning last August. We were pointing out things in the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan that were fact. Inspire said they weren't following it. They did not follow the Comprehensive Plan in some of these housing developments in Buck Ward Road. They did not. And if you come to my house now, I will show you, our road is so narrow, and we have big equipment now, there's mud all over the roads, oh my gosh, we've got two developments at each end. Not a day goes by that I say to myself, "How am I gonna get to Crestview without dying?" And it's only gonna get worse. Now I'm starting to think, wow, wouldn't it be great if we had a Publix, and a Walmart, and Baker? So I don't have to drive to Crestview. It's getting bad, you guys. And I'm not just talking about the traffic, it's everything. I really have a little piece of heaven where I live, and everybody has property rights, but please listen to your constituents. I represent thousands, I talk to them. They did turn out and do the questionnaire for the Inspire study. Let's not wait and try to make something for the whole county. The Inspire study was for North Okaloosa. Please put any more approvals on hold for the north end, please. Let's get the sewer treatment plant taken care of on the east side. Let's look at the north end and how we can preserve it. Thank you.
Dan Bears?
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Dan Bears, I'm from 5865 Bush Road in Baker. And, you know, I'm sitting there thinking, you know, it's been a while since I heard anything from the county commission on the Inspire study. I was so impressed by the professionalism and commitment to public interest that those folks expressed while they were here conducting their meetings, and at the numbers of people that came to those meetings. I know there were lots more that wanted to come, that didn't, but they went through professionally and completed their study and presented it, and were very clear about it. I mean, it wasn't in government speak or bureaucratic language of any kind, it was, I mean, it was a little lengthy, but you know, still, it addressed all the points. And I thought, I wonder what the commissioners will do with this? And, well, here I am, and that's why I came, is because you haven't done anything with it, that I know of. If you have, then address one of the points in the study that said there was alarm over the lack of communication and transparency. So somebody, some of you, someone of you have to speak about what this study is going to mean to us, because we're interested in that. And I'm kinda surprised I came here today, because, you know, it's been a while, and I just wanted to, I've come to one up in the north end, and, you know, there were five, six speakers that said much of what I was thinking, and I'm thinking, what am I gonna do? Now, how will I make up something? Well, I just, you know, every day I drive down Route 4, and pass a field that last year yielded its last crop of cotton. Now there are heavy equipment laying drainage pipes in this acreage, and soon there'll be 68 homes of some sort in that field. And, I mean, it's impacting. I mean, maybe the person had to sell it for whatever reason, and that's such as it is, but it's also affecting the surrounding folks, like the person I buy my hay from, for instance. He's being pressured by the developer to get access to a pole that, you know, brings in electricity that they're gonna need to use, because they want to use Chelco instead of Florida Power and Light, because Chelco is cheaper, but that's gonna impact him. They also want to have easements for a drainage pond on his land, that's going to have to have like the 100-year overflow that actually goes into his hayfield, meaning now he can't use that land forever, because it's got to remain a drainage thing. But, so, what are you going to do? But, uh, so what are you going to do with the study? And when are you going to do it? Um, we need to see action and we need, I mean, we were clear. The, the people spoke and it's been documented. And there's a lot of interesting things in there that you can, like the county plan has.
Your time has expired.
Oh my gosh. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Tuggle.
Good morning. Linda Tuggle, six oh eight seven Terrace Lane. You know, Bonnie says that you care. Some of us are unsure if you care. I was thinking yesterday, when you have a child and you give the boundary to the child. And then the child goes outside of the boundary. And then you move the boundary. And then the child pushes that boundary. And then you say, no, um, this, this is the boundary. But then you move the boundary again. Or another parent or another caregiver comes in and fudges on the boundary. What happens in that, the mind of that child? The child is confused. The child feels insecure. And having been a teacher for twenty years, the child sometimes turns out to be misbehaving in a very bad way. Because they did not grow up with a, with a clear communication, with boundaries that were clear, consistent and maintained. I'm glad I got to go last because most everyone has said everything that I wanted to say. But I want to say this. There's been a great deal of question about transparency. Inspire came up and even said, you want this, 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 and this, but transparency with the county commissioners is one of the top three. That should cause great concern in this room. It certainly has caused great concern on this side of the room. And I feel like the child. I feel mistrust, suspicious. That is not my nature. My nature is to think the best of people. And I want to think the best of all of the people that are in leadership. But I'm sometimes concerned about the fruit that's falling off of the tree. And so I want to say there was a question in May. Should we adopt? Oh yes, we're going to take these three elements and we're going to run with them. And Lane has mentioned them. Then in October, whoa, this is a lot of material. This is a vast amount of acreage. There was that little sentence in October about the large landowners. And now I feel again like the child. Thank you.
Chris Curb.
Thank you. My name's Chris Curb. I work with an organization called Flood Defenders Panhandle. Um, sorry I didn't wear a red, uh, green shirt, but, uh, I'm a flood defender. What is a flood defender? Well, we're a group of people that engage our government at a local level. We stand on the missions and goals of the American Flood Coalition, which is a very large organization. I worked for Escamia County for twenty-five years in the engineering department. I was their stormwater guru. Did development review. I covered the whole panhandle, but I hadn't spent a lot of time in Ocalusa County. This is my first visit. Lane Watson over here asked me to come speak to you guys. Well, what, what do I got to tell you? Growth management in Escamia County and Santa Rosa County, I'm all about knowing what that's going on. And you have a plan here and you need to implement it. Because it protects your agricultural lands, you can't eat a house. You've invested in this plan, what, a million dollars? It's a lot of money for a plan. Don't throw it away. And you want to maintain your agricultural lands because you can't eat a house. I'll tell you a little quick story. I'm also, uh, on the Escamia County Soil and Water Conservation District Board. I was appointed in November. Just recently I was appointed at the, as the eleventh out member of the Santa Rosa County Land Development Code Task Force. Because there's a problem with their code. There's a problem with their transparency. There's a problem with their enforcement. You know why they have this Santa Rosa County Land Development Code Task Force? Well, you had two commissioners that got ousted by, well, what we coined as a pitchfork posse. You got a pitchfork posse falling over here. You just don't know it yet. That pitchfork posse also got rid of four councilmen in the city of Milton. I'm just letting you know it's coming. We, the people, not me, the people.
Cindy Smith.
Cindy Smith Pace. Every one of these citizens stood up here today, y'all. Thriving about their heart and what they care about the future. You should listen. As a nurse, a patient comes and tells you something in the room, you listen to that patient because they know. These citizens know. We need to be paying attention to this. I'm just as fed up as they are when it comes to the money. We are not bought or sold. It's about our families and our family's future and our children's future. They deserve so much better than what you're trying to do to our area and preserve our homeland. Our homeland should be preserved for our food. Show them how to farm. Because we have so many children that needs us right now for us to be their voice. I'm going to give you a prime example of one thing that you should think about when you go home and lay your head on your pillow tonight. A two-year-old child in Navarre, Florida was brought here by the mother from the border. Dropped her off at a predator's house. She ended up being in the hospital for several days to be repaired. This is what you're doing to the development is what's going to happen even more and more here. When is enough enough? When it, you don't want it to be your family and I sure don't want it to be mine. We need to preserve our farmland, just like we preserve our animals. We are humans and we deserve to be preserved. Thank you.
Justin Grant.
Appreciate y'all. Um, I'm a citizen, been here, been, uh, live on one twelve Jeff Drive, Crestview, Florida. Uh, the only time I left this area is when I got drafted in the military during the Vietnam War. Uh, I want to address Mr. Mixon here because I had a, uh, uh, it's, uh, first time I've ever written a, uh, poll, uh, you know, a person in power in a comm- commission. And, uh, there's a little road called Jennifer, uh, Centrefit Road. It's right off of Highway eighty-five going north. And, uh, it connects into Highway two and y'all had just recently, uh, spent a lot of money on redoing this highway two. Praise the Lord. That's, I'm so glad y'all got that done. But this little road, I sent, uh, Paul, uh, an email about this road, Jennifer, uh, Centrefit Road. And it winds all through farming country, but it comes out into Highway two. So it cuts about five, six miles off the highway. Anyway, it's, 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 uh, it needed the lines redone. It was at night, it's pitch black. And it's very dangerous, uh, uh, especially these uh, new trucks. It's got these huge lights on them, just blinding. And, uh, so I had to pull off the road at night because I just can't, it's just dangerous. Because they're flying low down that road. But lo and behold, I sent him an email out in the last, I think it was the last of January. And, uh, this past Sunday, I was going to church in the morning. Lo and behold, there was a lines completely re-lined. So I just wanted to commend Mr. Mixon for, uh, I, I know, I, I'm sure it was a group effort. Anything that's done in the county, you all had to vote on. Uh, but this, uh, I just want to, I, I appreciate it. And you probably saved some lives, I think, by re-line, restriping them roads at night. So now there's, it's, I just want to commend y'all.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Steve Perry.
My name is Steve Perry. I live in Miami, Florida. Uh, I was here at the October first meeting. I'm here to speak about the SS United States and everything. She safely made the journey down to Mobile. I watched her come in yesterday. Um, there's several things I want to point out to you guys, um, that you may not be aware of and everything. There are many hazardous materials still on the ship. Uh, and I know the ship inside and out because I've spent thousands and thousands of hours onboard doing surveys. Here's an example of pages from the tow plan that was submitted. This is my documentation that I prepared. Your contractor put his name across the top of it and declared it is his. But this is all my work, ninety-nine percent of it. I'm not here to fault that. The ship came to inform because I know he knew the ship would. But my concerns are that they don't know, because the ship's stripped, there's a lot more containment minutes. There's ten thousand gallons of lube oil in the reduction gear casings that you're going to have to clean out. Line bash sharings, double bottom tanks, bilges. There's lots and stuff, motors with PCBs. It's not as stripped out and clean of a ship as you think it is. So you have to be aware of that. Uh, over the course of the time, it's taken you six months to get the ship down here. Uh, there's been articles published that the Coast Guard in Delaware Bay Sector has been obstructionist and failing to allow you to move the ship. I think it's disrespectful for your subcontractor and your representatives to declare the Coast Guard is the problem. The issue is for your subcontractor and your county or your coastal resource managers to manage this project to do their job, their due diligence. It's not the Coast Guard's responsibility to take you by the hand and tell you how to move a ship. When your coastal resource manager made it clear that you guys have never done anything but boats that aren't even as wide or long because this ship is wide. So that'd be like someone who knows how to ride a bicycle and give them the keys and say, drive this eighteen wheeler, eighteen hundred miles. A whole lot of different things. It's not, it's not comparing apples to oranges. I'm not very good at speaking, so I'm a little nervous. So, uh, I hope your subcontractors and yourself will follow the thing and make sure you respect what Coast Guard Sector Delaware Bay has to say when they want to seize up. Instead of allowing it, make it look like it's Coast Guard's fault. Instead of maybe people that are responsible for towing the vessel and doing everything to make sure the ship, the ship gets down safely, which I no doubts about have done their job. The second point is, more than anything, is, uh, the diving in the short shallow waters is a good thing. Artificial reefs, but we all know this whole thing is disguised to increase tourism dollars and everything. Stinking the ship in much shallower waters, as people have said, will encourage diving for basic people. You had people here in October said we can have a diver out there in four days. No diver who's never done a dive should be diving on a shipwreck in four days. Their first half dozen dives should be perfecting their, you have no hyperbolic chambers or medical facilities along the Florida Panhandle. The closest one's Mobile, except for what the Navy has in Panama City. So if you're going to create a diving destination, you should have medical facilities to support those divers in case of accidents. The final thing is, uh, I hope you could keep the vessel as closed up as possible. There's a reason why passenger ships are not sunk as artificial reefs and diving destinations. People will get lost inside because it's too much of an incentive to get inside. And they will, they'll not find their way out. It's a lot different when you have a big container ship, a big rover deck where people can't get lost. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
This concludes our public comment. Next section of the meeting will be our visitor, Keep Ocalusa Beautiful, update, Ms. Kelly Heimer.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Keep Ocalusa Beautiful. My name is Kaylee Heimer. I'm also the Environmental Resource Coordinator for Ocalusa County. And we just wanted to give you guys an update on what we've been doing since being certified as an affiliate. So we'll get the PowerPoint pulled up in just a second. I'm sure the suspense is killing you all. Julio. All right. So again, Keep Ocalusa Beautiful, we are a county affiliate of the Keep America Beautiful and Keep Florida Beautiful affiliations. Which if you're not familiar with that, we focus on litter prevention, beautification and community greening. So we've done a lot of litter prevention. I try and do at least fifty cleanups every year. Um, as you can see, we've had some representatives from the county that have been able to come and join us on some of our cleanups. And every year we do a litter index, which means we visit fifty places throughout the entire county. And we will judge them on a one to four scale of how littered they are. And we use citizens from the county to do that. Trash collected since two thousand twenty-three, we have collected over ten thousand pounds of litter from the entire county, which is amazing. And I definitely can't do this without volunteers. So thank you to all the residents of Ocalusa County and to any of you who have come and assisted with that as well. I also work with all the municipalities who come and help if we are doing a cleanup in their location. Usually the public works will help transport some of that debris. We've also donated various rain barrels and compost bins to Ocalusa County schools. Whether it's because they want to do a garden or they have a club in their school that, you know, could use those donations. Uh, we've also donated some to the Emerald, Emerald Coast Science Center so that they can make educational displays with them. Here's some pictures, um, at our Earth Day cleanups that we do with the TDD, we usually give a rain barrel and compost bin as prizes and people just go crazy over them. Our cigarette butt recycling program, um, has been absolutely amazing. We actually have Sharon McCullough over here who has helped. And at the time of making this PowerPoint, we've already recycled a hundred thousand cigarettes. Right now we're almost at two hundred thousand cigarettes recycled. And they are recycled into benches, which you'll see in that middle picture right there. And that shows the community that we can actually do something with cigarette butts, which is the most littered item in the world right now. We do outreach all the time, so we work with schools. Nick told me to talk fast. I'm sorry. Uh, we go to all the Ocalusa County schools and do outreach programs. We also do pop-up programs and then um, outreach programs for adults as well, because everyone loves to learn. We do tours of the waste management facility and ECUA before we switched. And there we go. We can play a video, um, but we also do events like shredder events, recycling events, collection events, the hurricane cleanup, and then just any community events that we can add into. And we've also won two awards. Woo. Thank you. Thank you.
Before we move on, because we have so many who have spoken about the North End study. I would just like to say that I have been waiting for the South End. I mean, the North End Commissioners just want to take the lead on this. Um, I feel like we're elected countywide and it's, but it's not my district per se to come forward. However, um, I'm not in favor of another citizen panel. What I want to do is start acting on the things that Inspire brought to us. Some we may be able to implement and some we may not be able to implement. But I'd like to ask Elliot Camperd and maybe the committee here, our commission, to see if we could start looking at an urban development growth study. And so maybe, uh, because we can't talk to each other, Commissioner Mixon, Commissioner, um, Sherry, would you, you know, just go ahead and let us know where you're kind of leading us to? I would like some leadership on this, but if I don't want to be the leader is what I'm saying. I'm sort of waiting.
No, we're not going to open this discussion right now without a, a walk on. If you want to walk an item on, then we can do it, but we still have an agenda full with, with people here for the other items.
Okay, I'm sorry if I spoke out of turn. It's just that so many people are asking us and we can't talk to each other without bringing that forward. Maybe we need to have an item on the next agenda.
Yeah, if we want to walk something on to this one, there's a process for that, which is welcome. Uh, if we want to wait for Commissioner Minnit and have a time. But let's, let's refrain from, from moving from the agenda that we have. If we need to add it at the end and a motion and a super majority vote would walk that item on.
Mr. Chairman, um, Kaylee, I just want to say thank you for that presentation. Um, I've had the opportunity and many of us have had the opportunity to uh, work with, uh, Keep Okaloosa Beautiful and I just, um, the event that I went to, we saw, I saw the professionalism, the, the, um, efficiency and just the, uh, the organization that it takes to put one of those events on and just really improve an area very, very quickly. And I just want to say thank you for that presentation and the work that she does is very important and, uh, and it just makes our community a better place. So thank you for that.
Kaylee, I agree. It's great work that you're doing. It's, it's an honor that you got to host, uh, your colleagues from all over this year. Uh, it just shows what they think of what you're doing as well. And so on behalf of our citizens, thank you for the, the work that you're putting in. I'm glad you're here and part of the team and that you're leading in the way that you are. You didn't have to hurry. Move to the consent agenda, commissioners. Uh, remember number two is already, uh, resolved. Is there any action on the consent agenda? Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Goodwin and a second by Commissioner Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. Passes unanimously. Department business, Mr. Coffey. As you come, I'd like to thank Mayorhood for being in attendance with us today. I'm excited for the future of this partnership.
So, uh, good morning. Before I introduce the item, I would like to start with the, uh, town of Cinco Bayu, introducing the mayor and, uh, Mr. McGiddis and also Keith. Uh, if you guys would like to say anything, uh, briefly before, uh, get started on the presentation.
Good morning. I'm Jean Hood, the proud mayor of the town of Cinco Bayu. I want to thank you this morning for allowing us to come and speak in favor of the, of the two projects that are here on your agenda. I want to thank Commissioner Goodwin and Deputy County Administrator Coffey who came to a workshop we held last week for our council and many of our residents. And I'm just, uh, convinced that these two projects will be a very positive partnership between the county and the town of Cinco Bayu. And I ask for your consideration of that today. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for those comments. Um, I have the clicker here. So I'm just going to go through a few highlights for the general public because I, I know a lot of you are familiar with this and I'll be brief. Um, if you can see from this aerial photo, I know it's a little stretched out, but there's a bank building. There's a right of way between it, um, called Seaway. And then there are two lots next to it, uh, on the other side there, and those are zone commercial as well. So. So the, the bank itself is three-story. Uh, there's about thirteen thousand, almost fourteen thousand usable square feet. There's thirty parking spaces, traditional parking spaces. And then the, there's the two lots and you'll see boat, boat parking that's occurring in the public right way. These are some pics and these are all part of the, uh, interlocal and stuff that you see. It's part of your backup. And you can see the boat ramp there. If any of you had a chance to see it, the boat ramp is in pretty good shape, but it needs, the dockage needs work. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, tie-ups to the dock and stuff that, that could be prevented. There's some things we can do probably to prove all those situations. But, uh, we are proud to present this. Again, it's another waterfront project. It's preserving public access. Right now, all those private lots could be cut off privately, uh, sold for houses or some other development. Uh, the, the bank went and owned it. It could have cut off the parking lot. In fact, it does at times, did at times. Uh, we're partnering again with Cinco Bayu, which is very positive. We partner now with Shalimar, uh, Mary Esther, uh, Destin. So this would be another partnership project, which is really good. This will provide twenty offices. As you know, tourism is, uh, growing. We've been adding staff over the years. We've got them doubled stacked, triple stacked in offices. And, uh, we basically need the space as a kind of serve as a tourism headquarters, not necessarily as a welcome center. Uh, not really open on the weekends, but it's really going to be for our primary, uh, tourism headquarters. Uh, and it's opportunity for us to work with the town. The town has been after these lots. Uh, I know ever since I've been here and, uh, I don't know how long we could say. It's probably going over a decade. They've been trying to acquire these lots and they've gone through three or four banks to do so and until now, uh, we had to kind of buy the whole property to make it work. The bank actually had an offer to sell the lot separately. They told me the realtor for a million dollars. So the fact that we can bundle it as part of this package, uh, makes a lot of sense and actually allows us to really take this uh, boat ramp and water access and bring it to the next level. So this is kind of the numbers and that's in your staff report. Uh, the town is, uh, contributing some CRA money and some of their tourism money. And it's allows us to kind of reinvest that back in the, in the community and back in the town of the Cinco Bayu. Key dates, uh, if you approved it today, uh, we'd have our due diligence and by March fourteenth, we've already begun that in earnest. Uh, we had a visit last week. We have a visit again this Friday. And I'm sure it won't be our first and last visit, but we'll have to do complete due diligence by the fourteenth. We have the surveyor working on it. We have an appraisal process. I don't think we're going to have a problem with that. All those things that were acquired by state law that we do. Uh, and the contract provides us to close on or before March twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five. And I will tell you, this has been a long process. So we actually settled on a price probably over six months ago. It just, uh, it's kind of a bank out of Pennsylvania and they've been working to slowly liquidate these properties. So there's been a lot of back and forth and we're happy we finally came to terms and, and, uh, I think they're happy to, to finally move forward on this project. The two lots, I'm going to talk about both issues together if you don't mind, uh, the interlocal. So those are the two lots that, and you can see the trailer barking. Partially on those lots, but a lot in the right of way too. And it even obstructs the, the pathway to the boat ramp itself. So, um, the interlocal, uh, I could talk about that. It provides for not only boat parking, but bathrooms, stormwater, which there is no stormwater, cameras, lighting, buffers, uh, for the residential people next door. We got to work around some of those trees. There are some nice trees in there that we'll have to work around and incorporate in the plan. Um, the boat dockage and ramp improvements and shoreline stabilization, we can hit all those things too. Because the shoreline of the bank, it, you can see there's some heavy erosion there that's occurred between the, uh, highway and the, and the boat ramp. There's some heavy erosion that's occurred there. Uh, it does have, uh, we, it has this providing in the interlocal that we work together on the plan. We both, uh, we both will approve a site plan before we go into final design and construction area. Uh, has cost sharing, talks about whose lead. Uh, the county is a little different in this one. We would retain ownership of the lots. And we're actually going to propose to vacate the road between our prop, two properties. So that what this will actually do is allow you a better design of the one that was already occurred. Because before they were trying to buy the lots and do a design, but you still have the right of way and you still had private ownership of the bank that they anticipated. Now all that, if all that's one, that opens up the doors to redesign that in the most optimal manner and look, take another look at that. Uh, it's proposed in the interlocal that the county would operate the boat ramp. Right now, we're already providing some enforcement. I know, I don't know what level we are, but we are really trying to enforce the no commercial activity and that was an agreement between us and the town already. And so this will be like the next layer of that, the next step in that process. Um, it does require deed covenants and that's to protect the town's investment and our investment. So that after thirty years, it's, that's a minimum timeframe, uh, but it allows, allows for that protection to occur so that neither party, they have to get consent of both parties if you want to do something sooner than that. It's a mutual consent thing. Um, if there's a problem, there's a remediation problem in there that we can work together and remediate the problems. Also two county only boat lifts. So these wouldn't be open to the public. These would be maybe for a sheriff, maybe for, uh, the coastal resource team if they had a boat at, at some point in the future. Well, they got a boat now, uh, from the sheriff's department. They have a former boat. This is the plan that is, uh, conceptually was done several years ago, pre, I want to say about two thousand nineteen. And, uh, again, it was done before, uh, the consideration was done for the right of way or the private ownership of the bank property. Uh, so we will revisit that and that was done by the town engineer and there was an estimate done at the time. Of course, prices have gone crazy since two thousand nineteen post COVID. Uh, almost everything is almost doubled. Uh, and if you start doing some of the other things like working on the dockage stuff, the costs will go up for the project. I know I hit both items together, uh, same time, but.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Coffey.
Mr. Peters was with me at the, uh, town, town meeting and Jennifer's here too to make questions.
Mr. Goodwin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if, uh, if you're ready to entertain a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion and then, uh, have some discussion if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
So, um, starting with item one, then, um, I move to approve, uh, department business, item A, one.
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, uh, you know, I think as Mr. Coffey describes, it's kind of the, you know, items one and two kind of go hand in, hand in glove. Um, you know, really the opportunity to, to partner to upgrade the, the, the boat ramp and those facilities is contingent on being able to obtain these properties, of course. And so the, the purchase and sale is the, is kind of the, the, the thing that is the threshold issue. Um, but that said, I just wanted to share with the board. Um, I did have the opportunity to attend, uh, the Cinco Bayu, uh, special meeting on this issue. Um, they did have residents turn out. A lot of, a lot of folks, I think probably that lived it. I think it's called Captiva Cove right there, um, adjacent. And, um, there were some very legitimate concerns that were expressed. I didn't hear anybody that was fundamentally opposed to the project. What it was, uh, I think was more of an effort of sharing with the, um, town council. The things that those residents were worried about. And I, I feel confident that we can address all those things as we go forward. Um, and again, I'm probably segueing a little bit into item two, but if that's okay, I think as Mr. Coffey pointed out, they're kind of, you know, tied together. Um, and so I just wanted to share a couple of those things. One, um, there's a big concern from the residents there about an existing problem with vagrancy, um, and trespass on to their private properties. Um, so that's one issue. Um, an, another issue is the, uh, the routing of boat trailer traffic. Um, especially with the much larger vessels, um, and the much larger trailers. Uh, I think parking on either the right of way directly in front of some of the private property or maybe even encroaching into the private properties. So there was a request as we go through this to kind of consider traffic routing, uh, that might protect those, the, those properties. I think particularly on Lucille. Um, and then, you know, uh, another significant concern about the commercial use, which I know we've been already starting to partner with, with, um, the town of Cinco Bayu on helping clamp down on this. But I think that this opportunity would really increase that ability to, to enforce. Um, and then, you know, I think the last one was the, uh, was the drug and alcohol abuse, um, probably heavily alcohol issues, although there were some concerns about other illicit drug use and stuff like that. So I think we can address all those things, you know, at this point, you know, there, there's not a, not a plan that is, uh, you know, in its final form. There's not, uh, I, I think, you know, Mr. McKenna's town attorney kind of described it as we don't have construction-ready documents yet. That's going to come and there'll be a process for us to work through that. But as we do that, I think if we kind of focus on and, and work with the city on, you know, the security, like Mr. Coffey said, cameras, fencing, buffers, you know, lighting that doesn't create light pollution, hours of operations and other security things and probably leverage technology for that. Um, I think we could address all those concerns. But those were the things that I heard, um, and, and both those were expressed at the meeting and then, uh, you know, a, a group of, of citizens also, you know, met with me afterwards, you know, as we were kind of, as the meeting was, was over, but before we, uh, kind of funneled out and kind of expressed those same things. So I didn't hear anybody that was against it. They just want to make sure that there are some protections in place. So anyway, thanks for letting me share that.
Any additional comments?
All of those are good things. Um, the only other question I would have or just comment. The two lots have some beautiful old live oak trees and I would hope if we go into place parking, that we would consider not clear cutting, all of them. I mean, I understand some have to be removed, but I don't know how the mayor feels about that.
I think that's the, the intent.
Favor of saving as many trees as we can.
Thank you and thanks for addressing that in your presentation as well. Any further comments? All in favor signify with aye. It passes unanimously. Item two. Mr. Goodwin.
Um, move to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Coffey. Ms. Byrd.
And commissioners. It's property renewal time again, which I know is no one's favorite time of the year. Um, the good news is, is that we are seeing a softening of the, uh, commercial property market. Uh, with our current program and coverage, we would experience a slight decrease in the rate this year. Uh, staff is proposing, um, option number three or four, uh, in which we would have no increase to the rate. Much credit to Commissioner Boils when he was in office, um, that he was always challenging staff to be diligent on the property, uh, program. So, um, in past years, we've been creative with piecing, um, the property program together with several carriers, which has resulted in us having lower rates. If you look at the benchmark document that's in your packet, uh, you'll see that we have much lower rates than our surrounding counties and other, uh, similar, uh, counties, uh, such as us. Uh, we're at thirty-six cent per one hundred dollars of coverage. Some of those are near one dollar. Um, to give a little history, um, Okaloosa County several years ago had a hundred million dollar, uh, limit. And, uh, during that time, uh, there was, um, a hardening of the market in which everyone in the area was experiencing sixty to a hundred percent rate increases. And we experienced a sixty percent rate increase that year. So in an effort to present something that was, uh, tolerable, you know, for us, we decreased our limits to twenty-five million, which you can see, uh, is common in, in the counties around us. Um, this is tolerable to FEMA. We run a one and two hundred and fifty-year storm model in order to find out what the, um, acceptable rate of responsible coverage is for FEMA and that's nineteen million dollars. So we have always been able to cover that, um, and to carry enough insurance. Uh, raising the limits has not been available to us. In two thousand twenty-three, if we had been able to raise the limits to thirty-five million dollars, we would, it would have cost us three hundred thousand dollars. This year with the softening of the market, it's around sixty-six hundred for that same coverage. The primary staff recommendation is option number three to increase the limits to thirty-five million. The primary staff recommendation is option number three to increase the limits to thirty five million um, and to um, go back to a fully insured plan. Uh, the savings of the self insurance quota fair quota share that the county took on previously uh, of one point five million dollars was a two hundred thousand dollar savings when we started. Uh, at this point in time, it saves the county a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Should the board want to continue down a path uh, to become more self insured, uh, option four is available. I still would recommend us increasing our limits to thirty five million. If we keep the quota share, I would ask that the board uh, continue to set aside uh, money toward the uh, property reserve. The benefits of increasing the limit are obviously we would have immediate access to that money instead of waiting on FEMA. And in lean years, we would have something to cut if we had to cut some of our our benefits to uh, get to an acceptable rate. Uh, I will certainly entertain any questions. I do have Paul Dawson and Molly Gonday, who are our brokers on Zoom. Uh, they had competing uh, meetings today, but they're on our Zoom call.
So I'd like to move for uh, approval of option number three. See if I get a second, but I'd also like to ask Mr. Tomanscheck if he can bring up that benchmark. I don't know whether the audience can see it, but it's amazing what you've done, just amazing, the comparison with the other counties, so.
Well, like I said, I I credit Commissioner Boils with uh, challenging staff and our brokers getting getting creative with that. I do too. Yes, I think Walton County is is right at ninety seven cent uh, per hundred dollars. And you can see that Escambias uh, and Walton County covers about half of the insured value that we do.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, my question.
I've always been a little nervous with the self insured uh, option, but luckily it's worked out for us, but I'm glad that we're going with three.
Any further discussion, Chairman? Chairman, uh, Ms. Byrd, I just want to say thank you for the time that you spent uh, going over all this stuff. I'm sure that you did with all the commissioners. Um, I too am very impressed with the work that you guys have done. I thank Commissioner Boils for uh, for his um, you know, pushing for this sort of diligence, but it's a lot of work, I know, uh, to see that we're paying nearly a third of what some of our neighboring counties are. Um, that's just really impressive to me, and speaks to, you know, speaks to the work that you guys have done, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I I just want to say that I tend to favor option four. Um, agree with increasing the limits, um, but keeping some component of of self insurance in place. Um, you know, I wasn't certainly wasn't the one that spearheaded going down that path that was Commissioner Boils. Um, I I think he was on to something there. Um, and uh, you know, I don't always agree with him or didn't always agree with him on everything. But on on that one, I think it that was the right direction. And I think option four lets us continue that that path, um, but doesn't put us at an unreasonable risk. Um, you know, I think um, Ms. Byrd and her staff have kind of looked at that. And I think option four is a, I I I think it's a legitimate business decision to make. It's the one I would favor, um, and it's the it's the option I would vote in favor of today.
I agree with you. I um, I enjoy the pursuit that that we were after. I I like how it was um, was brought in and looked like it was terribly out of sight. But um, but I think we've made good headway towards that.
We we have approximately eight hundred thousand that we have put um, in that property reserve. There are other um, means through our general fund reserve um, that Ms. Fitzgerald and I have talked about. So we're we're in good shape um, to continue down that path. If that's what the the board desires, I would just ask that we put some money aside uh, this year towards that.
And and I think that's wise, and in your, in your recommendations, well, prior to your recommendations, I believe in your staff report, you did include that you'd like to continue a designated property reserve allocation of three hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
Have a.
Chairman, could you speak to why you chose or recommend option three over four?
Just because there was not as as, and I recommended three or four. Um, but just because it was not as much savings as we had had in previous years um, for the risk. But um, but we, as long as we're planning for that and putting that aside, I'm good with option four. Motion to move on, option four.
Just just a moment.
My understanding is we have to vote on this, and then we can consider option four if this one does not pass.
Vote if it doesn't change prior to vote, but yes, correct. Is that the desire? So we'll vote for uh, the motion at hand, which is option three, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? No. Now we can entertain uh, an additional motion from any other.
I'll move to approve option four.
I'll second that.
What second?
Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Before you come, Elliot, we're going to take a ten minute break.
Thank you. Yeah.
We'll reconvene. Continue the meeting. Next, under Department of Business is Elliot Camper.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Growth Management has one item on the agenda this morning, and that is requesting ultimately to set a public hearing for March the 18th in order to consider revising the county's waterway rental safety vendor ordinance and regulations. Also common for it too is the livery program. And really, a lot of this is housekeeping, as you see in the staff report. We're updating the definition of what is a livery, which has been a problem for Destin, Fort Walton, and Okaloosa County in trying to say, what exactly are you doing? Is it covered by the regulation? As a matter of fact, the state of Florida is today considering an amendment to the state statutes that also define livery, and we're going to make sure ours is consistent with that should it pass. Another addition is we're requiring a livery permit from the Fish and Wildlife Commission as part of an application to our program, along with a valid copy of the current business tax receipt. We're admitting the certificate of good standing requirement to the application because that's redundant with the BTR. You have to have one to get the other. Kind of a more substantive change is that the fueling plans that you have to have operate your livery business are not approved by DEP and FWC. They're actually approved by the jurisdictional fire district, so that change is being put in there as well. And therefore, the FDIP and FWC were also being refused fueling plan. Probably the most substantive change is last year, the state is changed, or mid last year, state changed it's who can operate a rental boat. And basically, our wristband strategy in our current program would allow different age classes based on different colors to operate under supervision of an adult who actually rents it. The state is basically said, nobody under 18 is operating one. So we have to change our wristband program per the ordinance because it allows some of these youngs 16 to operate a boat as long as they have adult supervision. And also, we've clarified that the insurance requirements, as it's written right now, it says per occurrence. What was that mean? And the minimum requirement for personal was now per person, when $1 million aggregate insurance is now required. So those are the changes we're proposing. In the 10-minute intermission, I did have a couple of people approach me, want to talk about it, Gilligan's Water Sports, and then Onboard Consulting. They've both worked with the consortium. I'm happy to talk with them and get them a copy of the ordinance. And they're also tracking the changes from the state legislation. But really, what we're asking for is the board to set the public hearing so we can make those amendments. Certainly want to do the definition of livery because we have to have clarification for enforcement. And also, we really want to make sure that our wristband program is consistent with what the state allows. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Want a motion for approval?
Sure.
So moved?
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, second. Commissioner Palmer, any further discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right. And I'll vote in support. Just a quick question, Elliot, you mentioned something about a state law change with the age for operating vessels. Is that limited to rental vessels, or is that in general?
I believe it is limited to the rental vessels, and I will clarify that, and I'll get you a response, and I'll copy the board members.
I appreciate that, and I understand that question may exceed a little bit of the scope of exactly what we're doing here, but just it's the first I'd heard that, and so I think that's kind of a big issue around here, so.
I would imagine, yeah.
Mr. Cox?
Just so I understand, understanding to say that the hearing for March 18th is simply to to make sure that we are in compliance with the law changes for the state?
It is primarily to make sure that we are consistent with the state law requires with the definition of livery business and also with the age of people able to operate a rental boat, but also some little things that clean up our ordinance. For example, who's looking at the fueling plans and all that kind of stuff. But again, that's based on who's actually going to work as opposed to what our code currently says.
Is there a delineation now also between rental, between boat rentals and PWs and personal watercraft?
Well, you can rent a personal watercraft, you can rent a pontoon boat, and our ordinance would address if you're renting a watercraft, you're covered by that, okay?
Okay.
And of course, watercraft outside of rentals have, you know, their own, you know, issues with them as well. But this is talking strictly about renting boats, renting watercraft.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, signify with the eye. That's unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Autry.
Jason Autry, Public Works, there's one item for your consideration today. This is a request that commonly comes from the State Department of Transportation when they are doing work in our county, and they need to utilize side roads. You've probably noticed the state Route 85, and you can see the limits of project that they're looking at down there is in need of some repair work, and they have what they call a 3R project, which is to mill and resurface the roadway. The work requires such deep milling in certain locations that they are asking to use side streets as detour routes. Nick, if you'll scroll down, you'll see this is specific to the Shalimar area, excuse me, Beachview Drive and Fourth Avenue just across the Shalimar Bridge. They'll do milling work that causes the need to close the roadway. You won't be able to traverse it for a short period of time, and they're asking to utilize county roadways. They're also doing this with the town of Shalimar and with the town of Sincavayou because they're using some of their side streets as well. The work is proposed to occur overnight, so hopefully it'll be minimum disruption because of the traffic flow. But this is necessary in order for the work to begin. The state is going to let this project, we need to advertise for contracts this summer, and hopefully they'll get underway in the fall or late in 2025, so we can see the much-needed improvements out there on State Route 85. With that, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, and we're hopeful that by getting this information out to the public can be a little bit more aware of what's forthcoming in terms of the state projects.
Please, this is my district. I'll be glad to say this, and I'm happy to let them use the roads. I can't tell you how many calls I get each week about Shalimar, the whole Shalimar Bridge, Aglen Parkway. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
That was my motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason, while I've got you up here. Just real quick on this one, you mentioned the milling, and I don't know if this will directly affect any of the signalized intersections. But one question I had, and you and I've talked about this before, and I didn't know if this would be addressed here, is that, you know, when they're doing the work, if they would, if they're going to provide for
Temporary signalization.
Temporary signal control triggers while the work's going on. I, it was kind of a, I think in the urban areas, when they don't do that, and the lights run their full cycles, it creates problems. And my understanding is, is it's not an impossible thing. It just has to be part of the contract.
Yes, I had actually very, I had a conversation with our traffic engineer about this yesterday, following up on a different issue, which was related to an accident you and I were discussing. This is intended to be in the contract as we understand it. So that's a good, that's the good news. The difficult part is how will it be enforced by the state? So we continue to work with them on making sure they put that temporary detection in to keep that traffic flow as good as possible. Because milling, what it does is, just so the public is aware, when they go through and they mill the surface of the asphalt up, it cuts down far enough that it hits the detection loops. When those loops cut out, when they break, when they fault, is what we call them. The light just goes on a standard timing cycle, which does not necessarily tie into the related signals or allow them to maximize the through lanes or where the demand is. So we will push that issue with the state. We want that to be as effective as possible. And if necessary, then we'll certainly utilize our forces to see if there's a way that we can improve that to keep that flow going as good as possible. The best thing is if the project is executed quickly and efficiently to get in, get out, and move on with it. So we are aware of that, and that is one of our greater struggles, and I think the state feels the same.
Thanks.
Yep.
All in favor, signify with the eye? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two additional speaker cards. Jeff Childers. Hit the speak button, Pastor. Sorry, it's on the base.
Right here. All right. I'm Jeff Childers. I live at 6092 Blueberry Lane here in Crestview. And I just wanted to address the Inspire issue. The, and I wanted to thank Mrs. Ketchel for trying to bring this to the fore today, and it doesn't appear that there's going to be an opportunity for that to happen. But I wanted to just say that I, while I appreciate the sunshine laws, it seems to me that you guys are somewhat restrained in that you can't truly deliberate among yourselves all of what's going on in your minds about a lot of issues, particularly in this case, this Inspire study. And I think we're kind of at a loss on that. I would really like for you guys to be able to get behind some closed doors and actually hammer some things out, and then come back to us and let us, let us get together, you know, in an open forum and be able to give our input, hear what you guys have to say. And so full deliberations would be helpful. Unfortunately, this is what we're restricted to. And every time you come together, we have these meetings, we've got a full agenda. So I wanted to say, I have talked, I have spoken to Paul personally on this matter, and as we sat down and talked, some of the things that he had in his mind with regarding the study and how some things could be implemented, I thought were very well thought out. My encouragement to him was to, let's somehow get this communicated. It made sense. He was taking the principles of the study and applying it even in a broader sense. And so I would like to see us have a format where this could really be brought out and things hammered out back and forth between this group and the citizenship. So I think communication is the biggest issue. I think a lot of people that are asking for transparency, all we're talking about really is communication. And open communication at that. I will say, Commissioner Goodwin, that I don't think that a handpicked advisory committee or board is going to engender that trust that we want back and forth between our elected officials and the citizenship out here because it's going to be perceived, I think, wrongly. That's just my opinion, but I do want trust. I'm a pastor of the Shepherd's Church here in town, and every month, the very first Sunday of the month, we as a church make it a point to pray for our government and individuals in the government. And it just so happened, I didn't orchestrate this, I'm sorry, I didn't orchestrate this, but every single one of you were prayed by name by our church just this past Sunday. So I do want trust to be there. So I am requesting that we have a dedicated commissioners' meeting to this issue. If that's at all possible, that's all. Thank you.
Cindy Smith?
Cindy Smith, face. I want to let you guys know that I noticed that you're not compliant with the ADA Act, which is the Disability Act. I'm hearing impaired, and I noticed you have no way of communication correctly. You don't even have a sign up. There is an app that you actually can download and get into the system where anyone with hearing impairment can come in and download to that app and be able to hear you guys through your mic if they can't understand you here. I highly recommend this because there's people out there that are deaf that likes to be more involved. And since 2020 with the COVID era that we all experienced, you will be surprised, the number of children and adults' hearing has increased dramatically because of this condition. I've been like this since I was seven years old. I relipped, so I can see everything you say when you're not behind the dais. But that's, that's special to me. But there's other people that would like to be more informed, and I think you guys need to look into this because this is important for others that it does have this disability. Thank you.
Commissioners Minute. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Chairman. So I just want to address very quickly some of the things that have come up during the public comments today. Just the, you know, with the assertions that there's lack of transparency or, or that, you know, that there's no action being taken. I can tell you guys, there have been, there's been a lot of meetings that we've had. There is, I have not turned down a single meeting. I've met with the Watkins a couple of times and others on this study. And there's definitely a lot of work and consideration that's going on that's happening during this. You're not being ignored. We are not being, you know, I appreciate the, the hope that we could have, you know, closed-door meetings and work out this stuff. If we did that, we would all be in jail, unfortunately, because it is not legal for us to do that. We, everything that we do to your benefit has to be done when we, when we're talking with each other to your benefit. It has to be done in the public. And so just so that you guys can see, there is transparency. And I, you know, I love the sunshine laws in Florida. It keeps, it keeps us, you know, honest, and it keeps things out in the public for you guys to see how your, these are your dollars, see how your dollars are being spent. So anyways, I just wanted to say that very quickly. Thank you, and that's all I have today. Thank you.
So, and I didn't mean to insinuate that I was going to have a walk-on item. What I was trying to signal, because again, I can't talk to everybody, Alpha the Dais, is I'm waiting for the North End Commissioners to give us a signal and leadership where they want to go with the Inspire study, and I think that's coming. And I also just wanted to bring this up. We've had a long-term employee, I think 20 years. Sheila Dunning passed away this week, actually, over the weekend. She just was amazing for me in Women's Veterans Park, in the work that we've done to, for, in the ag department. And I'm so sad about it, and I think I'll eventually bring something forward to name something for her, perhaps, the new ag building. But I just want to kind of plant that little seed, pun intended, with my fellow commissioners. She was such a big part of the ag extension program.
I have nothing to add today. Commissioner Goodwin?
Thank you, Chairman. Just two quick things. First, I wanted to let the board know that last evening I was able to attend the Mary Esther City Council meeting. And Mary Esther was considering adoption of the proposed plan for the Cristobal Park. That's the park that the county and city are partnering on, that'll have some waterfront amenities, a dock, some things like that. Seemed well received. Of course, there were some, you know, expressed questions or concerns about safety and security. And I think that Sharon Gold, who was there, was able to address those about, you know, leveraging technology to control gates and security cameras and things like that, stuff I think that we're probably looking at broader, from a broader perspective on our parks as well. So just wanted to point that out. It was, it was a good meeting, and it was a good opportunity for furthering the partnership with one of our cities. So turned out really well. The other thing, and not to pile on, but, you know, of course, we've heard a lot of comments today about the north planning study, Inspire and so forth, and there's a lot packed into that. And I'm not going to, you know, try to get into a, you know, a full debate on those issues during my Commissioners Minute. But there is one small component of that that I think is low-hanging fruit. And I've talked to some of the citizens I've met with about this as well. But, you know, there is a concern or, you know, this issue of transparency, and I think that can be kind of a And I think that can be kind of a, you know, it can mean more than one thing. Certainly, there's transparency in what this board's doing. You can almost see that by the, the near crippling effect that sunshine law can, can seem to have, because, you know, we can't go and roll up our sleeves and sit down over a cup of coffee and talk through things. And so it's all hashed out right here. But, you know, so there is transparency in that part of the process. I think the, the transparency element that we could probably do something about that, that might not be too difficult of a lip would be in enhancing the access that the public has to pending land use related applications. That could be future land use map amendment requests, zoning changes, development order requests, be they major or minor. And I think we can do that by having it set up through, through our online portal. I know Mr. Camper has been working on that from a significant standpoint with regard to permitting. And I know that you can, you can access now pending permits, but I don't think that you can just simply log in right now and see, oh, somebody has filed a, you know, a, an application for a future land use map change, and then simply go on and download their, you know, their application, their, their wetland study, their, well, in the old days, it would have been a concurrency study, you know, and, and their backup documents from their consultants. Am I correct? Right now, you can't just go pull that stuff, right?
Correct. What, what you can pull right now is any development order that comes in, we provide the address, the parcel ID, description, engineer, and also we have a PDF of the site plan. So anybody can go in and actually look at what is being proposed reactive development orders that we have. So it would be the next step would be to take that and apply it to the rezonings and future land use map amendments. And we'll work with Nick to get, to get that going. To, you know, because it was not too difficult to do for the development orders. And that is linked that right through the growth management page of the county's website.
Well, and so what, and what, are we using an outside vendor for that or are we hosting?
No, we're hosting that.
So see, and, and I'll just share with the commission. So in, in another life, I sometimes download other local governments' documents for reasons unrelated to me sitting here. But what I found is there's two vendors I'm familiar with, both of which allow citizens to sign up for an account. So you give them an email address, business name and so forth, or personal address, whatever, email and contact information. It's free. They don't charge you. But one of them is called CitizenServe. Walton County used to use that. They've now switched to another vendor called Inergo. Bellatua County still uses Citizen Serve. But the neat thing about it is if somebody, you know, says, hey, you know, I, I saw a sign over there posted that there's going to be a land use issue considered on this parcel property. They can, you know, here in, in Walton County, for instance, they can go on, they put the parcel ID in, all of a sudden, they've got the, the, the full filled out application downloaded right to their computer. They can see the, they can see the wetland study, the wildlife study. They can see the applicant's site plans. They can see if there's soil studies, all of that stuff. They can download. I mean, you can go on there and you can download the entire applicant, applicant's submission without having to do a one nineteen request to the county, without having to go into the office and ask for copies and get the whole thing. And what I think that does is it does, does a couple of things. Sometimes it probably lets folks see, hey, you know, what's being asked for isn't all that bad. I can kind of look at what's going on and, and, and the dynamics of the situation. Or it allows citizens to start evaluating that and deciding, hey, is this something that, that I might have some comments on that I need to get involved in? But it's easy to do and other counties are doing it. And I think it's kind of a low hanging fruit to say, hey, you know, I'm not, you know, we may not do, you know, we may not be able to always give the citizens the result they want because you've got competing interests. But I think there's an easy way to say, but at least you're all going to be armed with the same information and have a same fair opportunity to present your point. I think this would help. The two, I'm not suggesting any particular vendor. I'm just saying I'm familiar with Citizen Serve. I'm familiar with Inergo. I've got accounts with both of them because of different jurisdictions using them. There's probably other vendors. I know, I don't know if there's a consensus to have this kind of escalated as a priority issue. I think that might be a better format than trying to just host it on our site. I could be wrong, but somehow, and we can probably reach out to our sister counties and figure out how they're doing it. Because I think what's happening is developers are having to submit their applications through this portal. It gets reviewed and it's actually cutting down on staff time. So it wouldn't be like growth management staff having to scan all this stuff in and upload it. It's seamless.
We are shooting for our first week of April, go live on one of the systems you, you mentioned. And it's, they actually have what's called a portal system self-service. And that's exactly what it does. And we're shooting for a go-live first week of April on that. We're going through the final review on it.
What would it have?
The, the one that we've been working on has that function, yes.
So it'll have all the future land use map application?
Yes, they're all entered into the portal. Like, like we had talked, we need to soft go-lives. The staff's going to be working with it a lot, too. That gets entered into that system. And once it's in the system, it's viewable to the portal.
Okay. And then will we put on your page, on, on the growth management page, a link to that?
Yes.
Be driven there?
Yep.
And then click it?
Yep.
Okay. So that's coming April first. So perfect. Thank you for sharing that. And I didn't mean to sound like, you know, I was suggesting we weren't doing it. It's just something I know our sister counties are doing, and I think we can do it. So I'm very glad to hear we're on it.
Here eager to do it. It's been a lot of time coming.
So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
Yes. Thank you for being here today, everybody that has shown up. I do want to address the, the Inspire study just briefly. Because I, I feel like it's irresponsible for us to, to let any kind of ambiguity walk out of this room when it comes to where we stand on things. And certainly, the impression that we leave you with on where we stand on things. However, I, I feel like maybe we, we are in danger of doing that if I, if I don't speak to this piece, that we have. I took office immediately after the Inspire study was complete. And we did address the Inspire study. Probably it, it isn't top of mind to a lot of people what our action was. Because what our action was, was to, because of the Burt Harris Act and the restrictions that it gives us on how we can implement the Inspire study legally, we had asked collectively to, to put this on our legislative priorities so that we could put it before the legislature to, to give us some advice on how we can legally put the Inspire study recommendations into place, right? So that's been a minute. And we asked for you to be patient with that as legislative session was, you know, a long way out. Now it has begun. Right? So we have walked a little bit on addressing the Inspire study in our meetings because that time span was, was coming. It was being marched off. We had the holidays and then, you know, we had the first part of this year and some special elections going on. And all of those things have, have been a little bit of a distraction, hopefully, to you to, to get involved and, you know, voice your opinions where, where those issues are concerned. But it's still there. And there isn't a single commissioner up here who isn't thinking about the Inspire study. And the million dollars that we spent on accruing the, the professional opinions and your opinions, your feedback. There isn't a lack of investment from us on what to do there. There is just the opposite. We put it on our legislative priorities so that it could be addressed in legislative session. How we can best implement those in a way that doesn't infringe upon the property rights of the citizens affected also. So I just wanted to cover that because I feel like it's irresponsible to let you guys feel like, you know, the South End is, is wanting, you know, your, needs to be addressed and the North End is not. The North End's walking on it or the, the South End's, you know, walking on it and the North End's not. There is not a lack of continuity here. We, all five of us, all five commissioners voted to have the legislature look at that and give us some directive and some feedback on that. And I felt like it was irresponsible for me to give my Commissioner a minute and not let you know that we are deeply invested in this. We want you to have a voice, or we wouldn't have put this study out in front of you and collected your opinion resultantally. So I just wanted to say that to, to make sure that you knew that there is transparency here. There, I've met with the Watkins several times in my office. I know that Commissioner Palmer has too because he disclosed that today. I mean, you want to meet with me, I'm here to meet with you. I just want you to know that that is our official position on that. And we made it public during that meeting. So if there is any lack of transparency, it is certainly unbeknownst to us. Thank you.
Meetings adjourned.